Meeting will come to order, please. I'd like to welcome everyone to our December 4th, 2023 meeting. This time, I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Lee.
Good evening. Commissioner Allen McLam will have our invocation at this time.
If you will bow to me, please. Father God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for all your many blessings. We ask now your blessings upon this gathering and the business of this county. We ask blessings upon each one here and the citizens of this county and how we love it, and we know you love us because at this time of the season, you sent us your son. And that's the season that we want to represent. And at the end of the day, all things we've done has been pleasing in your sight. Now, Father, again, we ask for safe passage home and continue to be with this group as we do the business of this county and help this state and this country in the way that you do all things. Now, Father, we ask this in all things. In the name of our loving Savior, Jesus, in his name we pray. And all God's children said, amen.
Would everyone rise and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McLam and Vice Chair Lee. At this time, I'll accept the motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Okay. I need a second. You got a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Pass unanimous. This time, I'll turn the meeting over to Ed Causey.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to do what we do annually, and that's select a slate of offices for the Board of Commissioners for the upcoming year. I will do the chairman, and of course, whoever is elected chairman will then take it and go from there. What we will do is we will ask for nominations for chairman. Once that is completed, we will vote on the order of the nominations. So that being said, I open the floor for nominations for chairman of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners.
I make a motion that we select Commissioner Gerald Kirit for our Board of Commissioners.
Are there other nominations? If not, could we see a raise of hands for anyone that's in favor of Mr. Kivitt serving? Congratulations, Mr. Kivitt.
Thank you. I voted against it, by the way. All right. I certainly appreciate the opportunity, and it's certainly an honor to represent Sampson County in this capacity. It has its challenges, but it has the rewards as well. So I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming. Apparently, someone's giving away hot dogs out front or something with so many people. I think this is the most, biggest crowd we've had. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Sue Lee for the position of vice chair.
You have a nomination for Sue Lee as vice chair? Any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor of Ms. Lee, raise your right hand. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Congratulations, Ron. Sorry. I appreciate the honor to serve. Thank you very much.
All right.
Fellow commissioners, it is a joy to work with you. And together, working as a team, I think we can accomplish great things for Sampson County. That's what we all want. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on with our program now to item two, the CVB Annual Report. Ms. Bearfoot.
Good evening, each one of you. Sheila Bearfoot, I'm the Executive Director for Sampson County Tourism. On behalf of the Sampson County Convention and Visitors Bureau and the CVB Board of Directors, I'm pleased to present our annual report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2023. Overall, our financial review is great. We had a profit last year of $21,786.91. For those of you who are not aware of occupancy tax, 67% of our occupancy tax goes for operational expenses like rental expenses, advertising, marketing, my salary, and so on and so forth. But 33% of those funds goes to our capital grant program. And the total occupancy tax received as the fiscal year ended on June 30th was $206,945.75. Our capital grant balance is $169,295.64. And our total fund balance for total for both of those is $363,974.49. As far as our visitor impact, economic impact study, domestic and international visitors to and within Sampson County spent over $63 million in Sampson County in 2022. Lodging was up. Food and beverage was up. Recreation, retail, all of those were up from 2022. The results of the economic impact for tourism in Sampson County is we had 342 jobs that were related to tourism in Sampson County that last year. $13.8 million was in payroll for those jobs. $63.3 million was in visitor spending. We had 11.5% increase in lodging. So that, all of that equates out to $79.15 in savings for each one of our Sampson County residents. These are not my numbers. These data, this data comes from an annual study commissioned by Visit North Carolina, and that's a unit of the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina. We had a new program that we started this year. It's called Uplift. And North Carolina was rewarded $6.4 million to establish a new tourism-focused Economic Recovery Initiative. This program supports and strengthens North Carolina's tourism, travel, and outdoor recreation. This program helps develop and implement economic building strategies for the recovery of North Carolina's travel and tourism that has suffered economic losses due to the pandemic. We had a ad that was featured as far as our barn quilt trail. It was a nice six-page ad that was featured in the Wrightsville Beach Magazine last year, and we received much traffic from the Wilmington and Wrightsville Beach area of visitors that come to, to go on our trails of the barn quilts in our county. We had our first ever barn quilt giveaway last year. We awarded barn quilts to five recipients, and they were real, real excited. We hope if funding continues that we'll possibly do that again this coming spring. We had three new events, venues that opened up in Sampson County. Rich Farm and Venue, it's a new venue that opened up in Roseboro. The owners of that is Dejana and Amy Rich. The Samuel Johnson House is located in Clinton. They are on the National Register of Historic Places. The owners of this venue is Randall and Stephanie Carter. And they also, right down the road, own the winery, first winery that we had in Sampson County, First Miracle Vine and Wine. The Historic Herring House, that's on the National Registry of Historic Places. That's in our downtown Clinton district. The owners of that venue is Daniel and Denise Rents. Denise currently is on our executive committee for the CVB Board, and she is our secretary. Sampson County festivals, we all like to work those festivals and have those festivals in the county. Our festivals are not just local traditions. They also bring visitors to the county. Some of the well-known ones that we all know, Kohairi Tribe, they have theirs, their powwow every September. Bloom Fest in Roseboro, they have their big event in downtown Roseboro each April. And we have two in October that we work. It's the Sampson Square Fair and the Sorghum Festival. And then this spring of this coming year, 2024, we're going to have another Ag Day. And we have those every other year. And we've got a lineup set. We finally got the entertainment set up. We're going to have food trucks, family fun, arts and crafts. But our live entertainment schedule is Carl Newton Review Band, they're a Motown band, Paige, and they're out of Hampstead, North Carolina. We've got Paige King Johnson, she's out of Angier. And we also have the Pizzazz Band that's out of Roxboro, North Carolina. We implemented a new app. The CVB implemented a new application that's called Visit Widget. And what that is, is it creates a way for visitors to research, plan, and experience their visit to Sampson County. This platform is ideal for tourism and our community. It focuses on giving visitors a unique, unique way to, to look and experience our destination. They can go in on this app and just say they, they want to spend the day in Clinton, but they know they want to go here, there, and maybe go here to eat. It will map it out, and it will track it out to give them like the time period of time that it is on that trail. We have 20, over 25 preset tours. If a visitor just wants to go and look at one of our preset tours, they can go on the, on the site and, you know, pick one of those. But it just gives you things along the way to, to look and see if you, like, if you want to go to the museum, we've got a day tour where you can not just go to the museum, but you can go to this shop and this shop and this place to eat. So we're real excited about that. You can go to our website and click on the link, a little pop-up on the left-hand side of each page, or you can download it on your iPhone and Android. Visiting C Farm App, an update on that. We implemented that a couple of years ago. Currently, right now, we have 76 assets that are currently enrolled that are in Sampson County that are enrolled on this. And what that is, is just an app that connects the dots to, just say if you're going to travel from here to Asheville, and if you've got this app on your phone, and if you elect to have push notifications, it will let you know, hey, where's that restaurant that's off the beaten path that you may be interested in? Or farmers markets that are going to be close by on your trail? Or, you know, anything unique? You know, it will pop up to let you know, hey, I'm real close to a you-pick strawberry farm. Do I want to go pick strawberries along the way on my visit? So this is just a great thing that I want to share with you. Sampson County Assets were in the top 10 for views every month last year, and that's all across North Carolina. We were in the top 10, so very excited about that. The CVB is a member of the North Carolina Coast Hosts. I am currently serving as, on the executive board as treasurer. And they give out a North Carolina Impact, Tourism Impact Award every year. Kelly and JD, too, that are from Autreville, they do all of our barn quilt painting. Well, we do have some people that do outside of them, but they do 95% to 98% of our barn quilt, quilts in Sampson County. They were presented the North Carolina Tourism Impact Award, and I'm very, very excited about that because we currently have over 251 barn quilts that are on our trail. And in April of 2019, we were registered with the United States Patent and Trademark Office as Sampson County, the barn quilt capital of North Carolina. So if you don't have a barn quilt, let me know, and we can get you hooked up. But we're real excited with JD and Kelly. And lastly, is our lodging providers. If it wasn't for our local lodging providers, we would not be able to market and promote Sampson County as we do with its assets and industry partners. So a sincere thank you goes to Budget Inn, Comfort Inn, Days Inn at By Wyndham, George High Plantation, Grace Motel, Inn at Clinton, Six Runs Plantation, Rosewood Motel, the Ashford Inn, Evolve Vacation Rentals, William &amp; Mary Motel, Sampson County Airbnb Hosts, and Expedia and HomeAway. And lastly, I would like to thank the Sampson County Board of Commissioners, and I would like to thank our county manager and our county administration and all the offices of our finance department, all town officials, and our hospitality industry partners for their belief and support in the value of tourism as economic development and knowing the importance of Sampson County Convention and Visitor Bureau's mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bearfoot. It was a very thorough report. Anyone have any questions at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll call on Dr. King. I think he's got a little information for us.
Just a little bit. Good evening, everybody. While I am getting set up, real quick, I would like just to ask, we have a lot of people in the audience, if you just mind me for a minute. Anybody who has some ties to Hobton, if you could stand up for a minute just so that we can know who you are? Thank you all so much. Y'all can be seated now. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Are we up there? Can y'all check? Am I plugged in? There you go. It's coming up now. So good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to talk about a needs-based public school building capital fund for Hobton High School. And so, welcome Chairperson Kivitt, Vice Chairwoman Lee, other county commissioners. Our school board members are also here, Sampson County School Board, so I'd like to welcome them. City Manager, Mr. Causey, thank you so much. Thank you all for allowing us just for a few minutes to present to you on where we're going with Hobton. So a little overview of what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about the history of Hobton High School, how we got here, the history of that community. We're going to talk about the grant application that is set forth by the Department of Public Instruction, the cost of what it would cost to rebuild Hobton High School, and then the costs that we will need from county commissioners as the local match. We will talk about the need, again, why Hobton and why now? And then we'll also look at a few site plans just to give you an idea of what a new Hobton High School would actually look like. Before I get started, I'm going to talk a lot. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Warren, who's the current principal of Hobton, to give you a little bit of the history and backstory of Hobton.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. In 1955, the Hobton area constituents formed a group that, to initiate the building of what is now known as Hobton High School. This included people from the Halls Community, the Westbrook Community, Piney Grove, and the Newton Grove area. According to the newspaper article here, written in approximately 1963 by Howard Simpson, who was the first principal of Hobton High School, the school was needed to broaden enrichment for vocational interests and college preparation. It's amazing that 70 years later, the high school in rural Sampson County continues to serve the needed vocational interests. The initial funding was driven by the newly funded, newly founded Hobton District and the issuance of bonds. Less than 20 years in, Hobton High School needed to meet the growth by building a technology building, a band building, as well as enclosing what was originally a center courtyard and, and what it, and the courtyard that was closed in is now what's known as our media center. In the early 2000s, a field house was built, sorry. In, in the early 2000s, a field house was built as Hobton High School needed more upgrades. In the past four or five years, the media center, which was built for an audience of 1978 students, began its facelift to brighten the facility and update the literature. This, had this has been concluded, I'm sorry, it's not concluded, but many of the books that we have at this point include Spanish books written in Spanish, novels written in Spanish, to meet the needs of our population. As the current principal of Hobton High School and a member of the Hobton community, I can assure you that while the demographics of the Hobton community looks quite different than it did in the 70s and 80s when I grew up here, it continues the family feel in our community. This is evident by the fact that more than 60% of the current Hobton High School staff either graduated from Hobton High School or their spouse graduated from Hobton High School, and they have chosen to settle nearby, which means we have chosen Hobton. Recently, our soccer team played in the state playoff championship game. Many of you may have seen the parade that we gave them as they left, leaving Newton Grove. The support by the Hobton community was as strong as ever. Hobton is the definition of family, and we will continue to express our Wildcat pride. Thank you.
So again, we have the history of a building, the community that was built in 1957. If you're like me, you got to put that kind of in context of what was 1957? When was 1957? What was happening in 1957? Right? So some fun facts for you about 1957. The frisbee was not even invented. You couldn't play fetch with your dog and throw a frisbee and have them catch it and bring it back to you. Right? Sputnik One, the first satellite was launched when this building was built. And we're asking kids to go there in 2023 and learn current ideas, current information. Right? I'm a big sports fan, so it's big to me. Dodgers are my baseball team. Right? Dodgers moved to Brooklyn in 1957. If you look at that, it's all in black and white. None of that's in color. That's when this building was built. So now to the grant application. What are we here to really talk to you today about? North Carolina Department of Public Instruction created a grant. It's really for school facility construction and capital improvement needs. That's a local requirement that local governments have to take on in building schools. That's not a state requirement or a federal. That's local. So this was established as a grant to help out communities like ourselves when we need to build a new school. Applications are open yearly. They go November through January. The funds can only be used to build new schools. You cannot use it to build a new central office. You cannot use it to build a transportation center. Right? It's schools. It's for students. And then it's, the application is due January 5th of 2024. It's a pretty quick turnaround when we get these to when we have to have them back to the state. So what are we here to talk to you all about today? Why, why are we here? So there's different funds that we can request for this grant. So we are requesting a high school, which is $62 million. So the state will give us $62 million if they accept our proposal. Now, all of this is that we can submit a proposal. Right? We can submit a proposal to the state of North Carolina for this grant. There's $62 million for a new high school. You can see you could build a new elementary for 42 and middle school for 52. And then there's local matches. So the Department of Public Instruction looks at, and I'm going to try to get this right, the adjusted market value is how they determine how much a local economy or a local government has to put in as the match. So for Sampson County, you can see local matches go anywhere from $0 up to the, one district has to put in a $21.7 million match. There are also some districts who cannot apply for this. So your bigger districts, Charlotte, Raleigh, Guilford, they cannot apply for this grant because they're too big, they're wealthy districts, and they can't apply for this money. So it's really set aside for districts who need it. And again, that local match is determined on the local tax, tax base. In Sampson County, our local match for this grant for this year would be $4,228,314. So that is the match of what our local Sampson County Commissioners, what we're asking for you to meet. That is not payable tonight. Right? So if you approve this, you don't have to write a check. It's payable while we're building the school. Right? So you, you vote hopefully yes, that you would give us these funds. We would then submit our application to the state of North Carolina for Department of Public Instruction. And then if they accept it, then you're a match as you go throughout. Right? So as we build, there's bills due, you have to put in your match as that. So it's not something that today you have to write a check. It's not something that in March, you're going to have to write a $4.2 million check when the building's built, which we expect three years if we're approved this year. Because you kind of think the state will determine in March who's approved, then you got to put it out for bids, you have to plan. Right? We're not talking about breaking ground. Earliest, right, would be like fall of 2024. And then a year and a half typically to build, so forth and so on. There are additionals, right? So if we add auditorium, if we add, you know, if we want to make bigger, nicer ballfields, all of those could be additional costs that we could add on later on. But everything in the building is there except for the auditorium with that $67 million. So again, just to give you some ideas of why now, why are we coming to you now? We costed a new Hobton High School in 2015, and it was $28 million. In 2018, we costed again, and it was $49 million. Right? Current today is $67 million. That's an increase of almost 80% in eight years. If we wait more, in 2026, this building will be $106 million. Right? We're now, we could get a $67 million for a $4 million request from county commissioners. Cost, so again, this breaks down a little bit how we get to 67 million. So the grant would give us 62 million. Request from county commissioners is $4,228,314. We get a sales tax refund because we are a nonprofit, nonprofit agency. So we get a tax refund from what we spend on the construction of that building. So we get an additional 1.1 million, which puts us at the total cost of $67,382,497 to rebuild Hobton High School. Again, I want to say, that's how much it costs. All we need from local county commissioners is 4.2 million. Right? To get to that 67. It does have a price of 3% inflation, which we just talked about is nowhere close to the amount of what inflation's looking like when we build schools. It does also have a cost to demolish the current Hobton High School. Right? What we know is that we can't keep empty buildings. Right? We build a new school, we have to take something down. So there is cost in here to demolish the current Hobton. We have some ideas of what it could be used for later, but that's definitely not the, the point tonight, but there are some ideas that we have. Furniture and technology is included. And just if you're curious, the current square foot of the new building that we're looking at is about 118,000 square feet. So much bigger than what we just talked about originally for the original floor plant, of floor plan for Hobton. Need. Do we really need a new school? That's what I keep hearing, right? Is our population, do we have enough kids to fill a school? We really do. Hobton High School is scheduled to grow four point, or sorry, 14.37% over the next four years. So if you look at the two elementary schools that feed Hobton Middle, and then you look at the numbers in Hobton Middle, you extrapolate that year for year in what we call our succession. Right? So you look at the number of people that continue through our organization, Hobton's going to grow 14%. Give you some context, Sampson County schools had the fifth highest growth this current school year of all school districts in the state. Our fifth highest growth was 1.5. Hobton's scheduled to grow at 14%. The biggest school district in the state this year grew at 6.3%. Hobton is showing some tremendous growth in these numbers. Another need, we talked about it was 1957, original building is 82,000 square feet. Right? Major renovations, it's had multiple of those. We have spent semester funds, so let's talk about the elephant in the room. Right? We've spent $2.3 million this year on Hobton High School. So why would we tear it down? Well, when we spent that, we didn't know. Right? We didn't know that we were going to have this opportunity to apply for a grant. We still need Hobton for at least another three years, and that's if our grant is approved on the first round. Right? It could be that we need Hobton for another four, five years possibly. Right? We might need it for swing space eventually. Who knows? We have looked at what are these costs can we get back? Right? So we put 2.3 million in this year. Can we get any of that money back? We can. So our windows that we put in at Hobton, the new windows, they're the exact same windows that we have at three other schools. Right? So when we go to tear down Hobton, we could easily take those windows out, save them for when one of those three schools needs new windows. Roof, can't do much about it. Right? You can't save the roof. We're going to lose that. We'll get some of the money back from HVAC. Right? So we do, our facilities has looked at what parts can we steal from the HVAC units that we've put in? Can we steal those units and put them at some of our other schools? Right? So it's about a 30% of the HVAC cost that we think we could recoup. So not a lot, but at least some. So we are looking at how we can also help. Some research, what, what does the research say about building a new school? Is it helpful? Does it do anything? Well, it does. So new schools actually show that student performance will increase. That's actually tied to attendance. Typically, when you build a new school, you build it and they will come. Same thing happens with students. You build a new school and they will come. Right? And so typically, when you have a new school, you have a higher attendance rate, you have more students who enroll. That then in turn shows higher student performance. Right? Also, when we talk about the economy, right? What is the, what does building a new school do for our local economy? Right? Well, about a third of construction costs in research, this is in more rural setting, so ours is a little bit different. But about a third of those costs come back. So of a 70 or $67 million, we'd have about $22 million that could come back here in local economy. That's from what construction workers are buying, if they're having to spend the night, if they're buying lunch, if they're filling up their gas tanks, if they're buying hardware, supplies. Right? All of those things are local economy generators. So we could get up to 22 million based on what research says. The Joe Brett Warren Business Park, right? That's a huge thing for our county that we put investment in. This is the home high school for that park. This is where families who build their companies there, this is where their kids will go to school. When families come to Sampson County and they go down 701, this is the school they pass first. This is the calling card for Sampson County. Right? And if we want businesses to grow here, we got to have a school that's also going to have them. To that effect, we also have to look at education a little bit differently. Right? Our school, currently Hobton, we'll look at a floor plan in a minute. Right? It is enclosed. You can't do a lot. One of the things that we'd love to do with one of our schools, not necessarily Hobton, everybody, all right, but one of our schools, we'd like to implement some service academies. Right? Have our high school students who are graduating with EMT, FIRE, police certifications, so they're starting a step ahead. But you got to have a building that can accommodate that. You got to have a building that allows for that type of space, allows for that type[1781.69] You got to have a building that allows for that type of space, allows for that type of instruction. What do we currently have at Hopton? We have holes in our ceiling. Now, these have all been fixed, right? But they're problems, they're problems because of the age. They're nobody's fault, no one has neglected these, no one has sat around and looked at holes in the ceiling and said, ooh, take a picture of that just so you can save it. That's not what we're doing. We just want to show you what the school's like. Here you have a hole, here the gym, these are the HVAC units in the gym. These have to be turned off when we play games in there because it's so loud, you cannot even hear, right? So you're playing basketball, you're playing volleyball, it's 112 degrees in a gym, you have no air circulation, right? Because that's the age of the building, right? We have ceilings that are falling down outside some of our schools because of leaks. We have pipes that have coverings that are just, the paint is flicking off, right? Our students deserve a better environment than this. And so to welcome that, I'm going to ask one of our students from Hopton to come up real quick and talk about her experience.
Good evening, honorable county commissioners. My name is Sotoya Lorenzo. And as the student body president of Hopton High School, I am honored to speak before you tonight to advocate for the crucial need to provide support funding for the construction of a new high school within our community. The state of our educational facilities directly impacts the quality of education and the overall well-being of its students, shaping the future of our community. Our current high school faces significant challenges that hinder the ability to provide a conducive learning, learning environment. The infrastructure is outdated, overcrowded classrooms hinder effective learning, and inadequate facilities limit our extracurricular and academic opportunities. Investing in a new high school will address these pressing, pressing issues and pave the way for a brighter future for our students. Here are five compelling reasons from my perspective as a student as to why funding a new high school is imperative. One, enhanced learning environment. You heard earlier this evening that the current Hopton High School is well over 66 years old. A new school building will provide modern facilities, updated technology, and ample space that fosters a positive and conducive learning environment. Up to date facilities are essential for promoting academic excellence and innovation. Today's students don't learn the same way or the same things that students learned over half a century ago. Number two, capacity and overcrowding. Our classrooms and hallways are overcrowded, leading to compromised learning experiences. Our athletic teams share a locker room to make room for visiting teams. Cheerleaders and most sports teams have to change into their uniforms in the crowded bathrooms due to a lack of locker room space. A new school will accommodate the growing student population, allowing for a variety of class sizes and personalized attention for each student. Number three, improve infrastructure and safety. Our existing infrastructure poses safety concerns. A new school will ensure compliance with ADA and safety standards and regulations, creating a secure environment for both students and staff. I am particularly passionate about this because I have a younger sister who is in the exceptional children's class and is wheelchair bound. Even now as a visitor, she has a hard time coming to events at the high school because it is not very handicap accessible. In a couple of years, she will be attending Hopton High School as a student. It would be my dream for her and all persons with a mobility disability to attend a new, modern school that is fully handicap accessible and more inclusive to everyone in our community. Number four, community investment. Investing in education demonstrates a commitment to the future of our community. A new high school will attract families and businesses, contributing to the economic growth and the prosperity of our county. Five, opportunities for growth and development. A modern high school facility will offer expanded opportunities for extracurricular activities, sports, arts, and career focused programs, fostering well-rounded student development. I urge you to consider the long-term benefits of investing in our students and community by allocating funds for the construction of a new high school. As a senior, a new school would not benefit me nor my father, who attended the same school, along with many grandparents and great-grandparents of the Hopton community. But your support will impact the lives of current students and will also lay the foundation for generations to come. I invite each of you to come and spend a day at the school, immersing yourselves in the daily life at Hopton High School. I hope that by spending a day experiencing our school firsthand, you'll gain valuable insight into the challenges faced by our teachers, administrators, staff, and most importantly, our students. After 66 years, Hopton High School stands as a testament to time, but it's undeniably overdue for transformation. The facilities no longer adequately support the needs of today's students and faculty. We are in dire need of a new school that not only aligns with the evolving educational standards, but also mirrors the spirit and identity of our vibrant community, showcasing our esteemed Wildcat pride. I firmly believe that a new school is not merely a construction project, but a testament to your commitment to providing the best possible education for our students. A modernized facility will inspire and support academic excellence, provide a safe and nurturing environment, and instill a sense of pride in our students and our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
I should have just led with that, shouldn't I? Just sat down. So I want to show you what, what Hopton's going to look like. What, what could we make Hopton be? So this is the current layout of Hopton, right? So we talked about the different buildings, all of the orange arrows point to the four different buildings on the campus. The blue arrows point to the eight mobile units that are on that campus. If you look to the far right of the image, you will also see three mobile units down that side with another one at the bottom. Those are mobile units for our middle school, right? We have to have a lot of mobile units because our schools just don't hold the number of kids we need anymore. You'll notice that this building is also landlocked. In front of the building is Highway 701. Behind the building are our football field. So if we want to expand that way, you have to tear up the football fields and rebuild them. If you've ever done that, the athletic fields, you'll know they're just as expensive as building to building, right? So you, we're kind of landlocked in this piece here, there's not a lot of room to go. Let me show you what the floor plan of a current Hopton could look like. To the right of the screen, you're going to see some areas in red. That would be the gymnasium area portion of the school. The nice part about this new building is that's completely separate. So we can lock down that red part of the building and have it as a community use. Community could rent this space out, they could use this space, right? This is a community ad space. It's a gem for the school, but it's also a gem for the community, right? The little line that you'll see in the green that goes from the green to the red, there's a black line, that's a hallway. So there's a door there that you can close to make that a completely separate space. So no one could go into the school building. You'll see the middle portion is a green, that's our open area, right? So we don't build cafeterias like we have now or like we all went to, right? Cafeterias are built kind of like the mall, they're open areas, they're open spaces, right? It's kind of a, a cafe area instead of a cafeteria, right? It's an open space, this is a space that can be used for different things. You'll notice on the backside of that green area where the green and the red come together, there's actually a little stage there. This is a, a little auditorium that you could have to put on, you know, a, a quick performance. If you have a parent teacher conference at night, you can do it right out there. As you walk up to the top of the screen, there's a, I'm colorblind, so it's a dark green, I think, up at the top of the image. That's where the auditorium, if we choose to add the auditorium, that's where the auditorium would go. This building is built so that you can add as we go. So let's say in 10 years from now, Hopton's grown another 15% and you need to add to it, you can just add a wing, right? So if you see kind of at the end of the red hallway, that wing goes out, you could add a wing there. At the bottom of the red, you could add a wing down there. At the ends of each hallway, you could add wings there. So it's a very modular concept of how we build schools now that you can easily add on to them as you go if needed, instead of having to build a whole new building. What I really like about Hopton and what gets me really excited about this building is the top purple row, right? So these are CTE classrooms in here, and here we have them labeled as FIRE, EMT, EMS. But these are really interesting classrooms in that the outside of them are roll-up garage doors, right? So the entire back wall, if you think of this wall back here, would be a roll-up door. So you can bring anything in and out of these spaces as is needed for our education. So any company that wants to build in the Warren Business Park, we can educate their employees at Hopton High School, 5.7 miles away. No matter what the industry, no matter what the skill, we can train them right then because we have these huge spaces that can be changed and modified based on the needs of our community. Upstairs, you get into more of the classroom, the traditional classroom setting. You have four science labs, four English class, four maths, four social studies, your typical four, two foreign languages. These are your, more your typical encore, or your typical core classrooms. This is also an upstairs area, this is kind of where your guidance office would be. You'll have some suites up there for offices. But this is more of a traditional setting of classrooms that are on the second story of the building. Where would we put it, right? We have different options, we have lots of different options for where we would build the school, right? So one option is behind, behind the current Hopton High School. And you kind of make a straight line. So you take the current Hopton, walk to the foot, where the current football field is, you build the new Hopton. Where the current soccer field is behind the football field is then where you would build the new football field, right? That is one option. You, we can also move the football field to it's at the side of the school. This makes it for a little more, a little better access for students during the day because they just simply go out the end of that hallway, those purple classrooms that we were talking about. They just go out the end of that hallway and ride into the football stadium for PE or something like that. A third option, we do not own this land yet, but we are still in talks with this, to buy the land across the street from where the current Hopton is and build the new Hopton there. This would alleviate quite a bit of traffic congestion because you can imagine now all the high school students are going to one side of the street. Elementary and middle parents that are doing drop-off are on the other side of the street. You can actually take, when the current Hopton High School is torn down, you can use that space as a queuing line to get all those cars off of 701. If you've ever been down 701 between 2:15 and 3:30, it's a parking lot because we have three schools that are right next to each other, all getting out and starting within 15 or 20 minutes of one another, right? So this would definitely help. You can see at the top, there's a huge parking driveway built because that's to ease the congestion of people coming in, dropping off. So it gives this long kind of flow of cars throughout the building or throughout the complex. So this is another option for again, where we could put the school. So there's a three different layout configurations. And so again, what we would like to ask is that the county commissioners approve the $4.2 million request so that we can apply for the public school capital outlay funds. And I will take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. King. Does anyone have questions at this time?
Just want to ask Dr. King, the land that's across the street, how many acres would that be?
It is 97 acres.
Say again?
It is 97 acres.
How many acres is the site you own now that Hopton is on?
I believe it is 78, but do not, I don't want that in writing. But I, if my memory serves me correct, it's 78, but Mark, my facilities person is not here tonight.
In, in your figures, is this land acquisition at, within the 67 million?
No, sir. So if we wanted to buy that land, that would be something separate on top of the 67 million. But again, we can build the school on the current land that we own without even tearing down Hopton High School. So that, that's not a concern that we see because we own the land that we currently have.
Any other questions? Lamb, you have any?
Taking everything in on, because I, I was privileged to work at Hopton for a year coaching, so I know the facility, I know what's over there. I also had the privilege to work at Midway High School for several years. So I have, I probably a little bit more knowledge of the two schools than some of these other ones on the board do. And my only, I'm looking at how you, your drawings and you're putting them, going to the back.
On this one?
Well, we'll go with the first one.
Okay, yes, sir.
You've moved everything back and I know where all, everything is there. Are we going to do away with like the, the training facility that's there for the athletes that'll have to go?
Well, so my desire is to build this across the street, right? On, on that property that we talked about earlier, but we don't own that yet, right? And so I, I can't begin to build plans when I don't own the land yet. But if I had a choice, that's where I'd go. But because of the timeline, because of the crunch and this being due January 5th, right? We do have plans that we could build on our current site without having to worry about across the street. Now, we're still working on that. And if you all vote for us to go ahead, that'll be a meeting that we set up tomorrow morning about the purchase and acquisition of that land.
Okay.
All of the property behind the current facility, has that been approved by DPI for construction?
So DPI, once we submit that, great question. Once we submit the application to DPI, then they score and there's a rubric. We actually were talking about it earlier today. So we actually get five of the six bonus points that are awarded because of just what we're doing with the school and things like that. So, but DPI reviews all the applications and then they send their engineers out once they approve the applications to review the site, review the specs. We walked it on Wednes- Wednesday of last week, no, Tuesday of last week. We walked it with the engineer that we're using and felt like it would be fine. We could definitely build right there on the football field. It would, to your question, Mr. McLamb, if we built there, it would take out the, fieldhouse, thank you.
Fieldhouse.
The fieldhouse right there, it would take out that if we build on the current football field.
But we're going, but we can leave the baseball field where it is and use it if we want.
It would, the building would end at exactly where the end of the current fieldhouse is.
Okay, that helps me, thank you.
So we're looking at the possibility of $4.2 million plus the acquisition of the land.
Well, that is correct, I mean.
Plus, plus any overrun.
Correct.
Without adding on the auditorium or any of that.
That is correct. There are also other funds, I mean, the, the school system themselves could put in funds. We can ask private donors, we've talked about for the auditorium, right? Different options for how we might can raise the funds for that. But to get us started, we have to have 4.2. And if we don't get the 4.2, we can never even find out about the three.
You, you make a compelling presentation and I, I see the need. I also have to be cognizant of the impact that it has on the county financially. We currently have $77 million of school debt that's not paid off until 2048. And we have no other source of paying that off other than time. So that's, that's a concern and, and very, very much a, a detriment, you know? However, I do, like I said, I like the plan, I like the idea, and I know the school's needed. Something we'll, we'll certainly have to take into consideration and advisement.
We got to what date?
So we have to submit our final application by January 5th.
Okay.
And that's with all signatures, everything to the state.
The thing that is making me the most nervous when we're asking for the 4.3, I'm worried about the cost overruns, building across the street. I feel like the board needs to have a concrete figure that it's going to be needed and I promise that there would be no overruns.
I don't think anybody can promise you that. So even if, if I have the contractor here, I can't promise you until it goes out to bid what the final greatest maximum price. Now, what we will do when we put it out for bid is ask for what's called the GMP or the greatest maximum price, right? That says, this is the maximum price of this building, this is what we'll pay. Anything over that has to come with change orders, has to be approved, would have to be presented to all of you if you're going to fit that bill. Like, it's not like we could just say, we're going to go build the $67 million building and then in three years end up with a 78 million and be like, oops. Like, there are steps for how that would work, especially if you do a greatest maximum price, that we have to come to you every single time there's a change if we're asking you to fit that bill.
It's, it's, it's a quite a monumental task for us to consider whenever you take the budget. We're in this year, we're $8 million short. We had to go into our fund balance to balance our budget. And we have that coming up in July of this coming year. We're starting off $8 million in the hole. So we've got to find money for that and then to add this on, on top of it is quite a monumental task. So that's where we are thinking about it. If, if we had the money, it'd be a no-brainer. But, you know, who knows?
And I will say, remember that it's not all due at once, right? So this is, by the time the building is done, right? Which is, could be three, could be four years, is when that total 4.2 million would be needed. So it's not, you have to bring it out of this year, you could set it that it's, you know, 1.5 million out of your next three or four-year budget. So, I mean, it is doable. Remember that schools have no way to levy funds. So I can't say, I want to build this school, come up with $4 million without taking it out of my savings, right? Out of my fund balance. And my fund balance is $10 million for my whole district. I'm going to spend half of it for one school, right? So that's why we're coming to you to ask for the 4 million because you have the ability. You can get income, I can't, right? So that's why we're presenting to you to ask for.
Have you, have you read anything on Facebook lately?
Yes, sir, I don't have Facebook.
My goodness.
Right, right, here you go. Now, you make a compelling, compelling presentation and, and it's, $62 million grant's hard to look away from, I agree with you.
$67 million school for 4 mil, 4.2 million.
Yeah. Anyone else got any thoughts or?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with the other commissioners, the school is needed. It's really old, I know. I remember riding back when it was built. It's really old and it needs a new school there, I agree with that. But like Mr. Kevitt said, we have to look at other things and consider other things also. But it's not going to be forgotten. Especially we don't have it till the end of, end of January.
So there, so y'all don't have any more board meetings, so can I, like, before now and January 5th? So what is the? So what is the, is this a no, that we need to go back and that it's a no?
I wouldn't say it's a no, I just think we've, we've gotten to do some soul searching and praying to try to figure-
Between now and December 5th, if there's not a public, a scheduled meeting, how will we know when y'all vote to approve?
You mean, you mean January the 5th? January the 5th?
January 5th is when it is due, yes, sir.
Right.
I mean, it's not my made-up date, it's on the application.
Yeah.
Can we just see what kind of date we could pick and we come back together?
Yeah, we can call, we can call a special meeting if we want to. Am I correct, Joel?
Or you could, you could do that, or you could recess to reconvene to a date in time certain?
Okay. All right, we'll take that into consideration.
This is such a monumental thing, it would be hard for us to-
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know we have a lot of people here that are interested, so I want to be able to tell them when we're going to know what the response is, because I know that's why they're here.
I understand that for sure. I broke it down, and you said it potentially would be four years. So we're looking, really, this board is looking to come up with 1.125 million for four years. With assistance, that I've talked to a lot of people from the Hobton area that are willing to do some things in that four years to assist, to help to offset some extravagant costs. So if you will allow us, as a board, to have a little bit of time, say, 10, 15 days, whatever we come up with, and let us convene together, and we'll have a meeting, and, um, there's a lot of people to consider. Don't get, don't, I mean, it's, we got, definitely you guys, I want y'all to know that. I've been there and I've seen it, I know. But also, in the same process, there's a lot of other folks in Canada we've got to look at when we're looking at doing these type of things too. So I would request, if you will allow us, to get together and come up with a date that we can come back together, and we give you a definite, one way or the other, within so many days. Is that fair enough? Chairman?
I'd say let's not nail our feet to the floor on a certain date, but before the end of the year.
How much time do you need to, well, you should have your grant prepared with everything except the, this part.
We were planning to submit December 14th.
Oh. Why didn't you come, well, okay.
That, that was the date we picked, though, just because we wanted the time to make sure that there was, you know, I mean, that gives two weeks for a holiday rush, like, we just wanted to make sure that it was there, no questions asked. So our internal date was December 14th.
If we, if we had to vote tonight, we don't have the money.
But you don't have to have the money tonight.
I, I get that.
But you, but you cut, you don't have to have the money tonight.
I agree. We have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure we can get the money if we promise it.
Yeah, and, and if we promise it, we've got to provide it. We're, we're not dodging it, we're just, we're just doing our, our job responsibly.
Yeah, I'm not saying you're going to dodge it.
But the other, the other side is, too, you're talking about purchasing land, you're going to have to have more than 4.2 million, and you're not sure what that is.
But I don't need that to submit the grant application. I can build the school on the current building, that site I have. So to the grant application, I don't have to have the built, the property across the street.
So why do we bring it up?
Because that's where I want to build it. So I'm not trying to lie to you.
That's what I got out of that.
Right. But once the grant application is accepted, then DPI comes, they do a site visit.
I, I got it, I knew.
But I want to answer your question, you asked me a question, I want to answer it, right? We want to be able to fully integrate what we want to do. And so if that's the site, we can still submit plans. If DPI accepts our application, then when they come out, we can submit revisions and say, now we'd like to build it on, across the street instead of here.
Anyone have any more questions?
I'm good.
I think, I think we have what we need.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll move on now to item three. Commissioner, Vice Chair Lee?
I have a couple of appointments I'd like to make to the planning board. I'd like to reappoint Gail Ganey and Jason Tindall to serve on our planning board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I move that we appoint Teddy, or reappoint Teddy St. Pierre to serve on our Airport Authority Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Appointments.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Anyone has, doesn't have any questions on that, I'll accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Got a second, all in favor, raise a hand. All right. We'll move now to the county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I offer no comments tonight.
No comments, okay. All right, at this time, we're moving to the public comment section. And Shannon, if you will read her.
In accordance with the North Carolina general statutes, a period of time is reserved for comments from the public on topics not included in our agenda tonight. Speakers will be called forward in the order that they registered and should begin by stating their name and address. Each speaker is allotted three minutes for comments. The light on the lectern will turn yellow with one minute remaining, and will turn red and chime when the time is up. If the allotted time is not used, remaining time cannot be yielded to another speaker. We ask that when your time is up, you promptly conclude your comments and return to your seat. The public comment section is intended to provide a forum for the board to listen to its citizens, and there should be no expectation that the board will answer questions raised during this time. A full copy of these policies and procedures is available at the registration table as well as on our website.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read this statement from the board, "The duly adopted rules and procedures of conduct of the meetings of Sampson County. Board of Commissioners sets the standards and decorum for its members, our staff, and for those in attendance. In these rules, we pledge to the citizens of Sampson County our respect, and we ask our citizens to likewise conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with board members and fellow citizens. Receiving input from our citizens is an integral part of our meeting and critical to the board's ability to make sound, prudent decisions that are responsive to the needs of the community. Offered with civility, such input is very much appreciated by this board. However, per adopted policy, commentators shall not use profanity, shall not engage in slander or impertinent or personal attacks as they offer public comments. Any input which is offered in the form of rude personal criticism of an individual is not only unwarranted and unnecessary, it is simply not helpful in our deliberation. We appreciate your compliance with the standards of decorum." Thank you. My chair is sinking. All right, the first person will be Elle Grant.
She went to the bathroom, sir.
Okay, all right, M. Molden. Please state your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Megan Molden, and, sorry, I'm really nervous. I reside at 2360 Old Mintz Highway in Roarsburg, North Carolina. Good evening, ladies, love, sorry. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you for taking the time to listen to my voice and request for your consideration in providing funds to help build a new high school for the Hobton District. This school has had thousands upon thousands of students over the past 66 years, as it is one of the oldest in the county. It has also educated two to four generations of family. It has become old, worn out, and used. It has served its purpose for years, but now it's time for a change. As a parent and educator, I humbly ask you for your support. Yes, $4.2 million is a lot of money, and times are tough right now. But with the cost of everything going up and inflation, it is sure to cost us a lot more in the coming years to build a new school. So why not invest now and do what is right, not only for not only the staff, but also the students of Hobton? Some might argue that new windows and a roof being installed in the past year was wasted money, but this was like putting a Band-Aid where stitches are needed. Repairs need to happen all over the school for the safety of the staff and students, as well to keep up with times of the education system. By no means am I saying that we need a state-of-the-art high school, but we need to give the staff and students what they deserve. We are teaching future doctors, CEOs, managers, presidents, teachers, and first responders, to name a few occupations. These students are our future. We need to invest in them just as we invest in our retirement, 401K, IRAs, et cetera. Without investing in our children, we are telling them that we don't care, that they aren't worth getting an education in a new high school. That's why I'm here. I'm here to be their voice and to stand up for them. I have two children that attend Hobton District, one at Hobton Elementary and one at the middle school. My family and I reside over 40 minutes away from Hobton, but that commute is one that we gladly take every day. I'm a second-grade teacher at Hobton Elementary, and my husband works at the high school. When I say we bleed black and gold, we truly do. We earn 95% of the home sporting events and put in 10-plus hours a day, not including our commute. When we came to Hobton, we immediately felt a sense of community, which turned into Hobton pride, and now we consider everyone a family. This is why I stand firm. I want the best for my family, blood or not. As a parent and teacher, I tell my children and students to chase their dreams, stand up for what is right and what you believe in, and the sky's the limits on what they can do. With a school that is deteriorating each passing year, the hopes and dreams of some students may deteriorate as well if we don't show them that we care enough to build them a new school. So again, I ask that you invest in our future, as I promise you, it won't be one that you regret. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Martin, Angela Martin? Angela Martin?
Hi there, my name is Angela Martin. I live at 90 Deer Grass Lane in Clinton, and I am an educator at Hobton High School. In the fall of 2004, I stepped through the doors of Hobton High School as a newly hired theater arts teacher. For the past 19 years, I have taught the very talented young people of Hobton High School. Hobton, first and foremost, is a school whose primary focus is on our students, their academics, and their ability to grow to become caring, empathetic, and disciplined young men and women in our society. Our world has become smaller due to technology. Our students see the world around them, not just the places in our community, but they see the schools that are grand structures, brand-new sparkling hallways and classrooms throughout our country, state, and county, on all forms of social media. They know that Hobton is physically subpar. When you walk into a classroom, every child deserves the same opportunities, the same chances, and the same rigor. When you walk into our dilapidated building, in every classroom you see rooms where every child sees mismatched desks that were designed for elementary kids and students from the 1980s. In the hall, rusted exposed pipes and overcrowded thoroughfares. In the bathrooms, stalls that were built for a 1957 teenage body, with missing doors on some of the stalls. In the auditorium, signs that remind you that asbestos is in our ceilings and do not create dust because it could be dangerous. And in the cafeteria, they find tables that are blue, and red, and brown, and black, and some with broken seats, and ill-fitting mismatched designs. It doesn't take much to surmise that Hobton has been the discarded school for quite some time. When each district receives new and improved innovations, their remnants come to Hobton. It is true that education can occur anywhere, and a building doesn't create the learning or the tools needed for education. But a new school would bring more to the students than mortar and brick. It would bring a strong sense of pride to our student body, to our community and our county. Hobton students deserve the opportunity to walk into a classroom that was designed for the 21st-century learner in mind. Hobton students deserve to walk the hall proud of their building and their school home. Hobton students deserve the same equitable education that every student in our county deserves. The benefits of a new school will be felt for generations to come, and will make an impact economically on our county as well. We have many success stories at Hobton. Our students attend universities all over our country, become successful adults, doctors, lawyers, judges, to business owners. We even have a double winner of the Park Scholar and Morehead Kane Scholar just last year. I'm proud to be a Hobton High School educator, and it is time that our county shows how much it cares about our students, our district, and community by funding a new Hobton High School. In closing, when we discovered we had the opportunity to attend a county commissioner meeting to speak and show support of funding a new Hobton High School, I couldn't wait to discuss this with my students. But as I glanced around, you see, few of them are present, because they told me, they said, "Miss Martin, why should we attend? We will never get a new school, it is hopeless." You have the power to change their minds. Show our Hobton students, Hobton School District, and the Hobton community that building a new Hobton High School is not just a possibility because you have the power to make it their reality. Thank you.
Mr. Grant? Is Elle Grant, did they come back in?
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for this opportunity. What I'd like to bring to you tonight is something that's been on my heart and on our community heart. It's making awareness of sex trafficking, human trafficking. Just to help you and give you a little more education, Clinton stands number one in sex trafficking. We stand number one in the nation for missing indigenous Native American people. I am here to tell you today, to ask, to be that voice, to be that demonstration to our community, to save our community, to our young people, to bring awareness to our community that this is going on. And you ask how? The reason what we can do is teach, educate. We need to be eyes and ears in our communication, just like for our future children and our future grandchildren. And we need to be that eyes. You're looking at from age two to 21, and these are girls and boys. You're looking at many of them being taught to how to traffic in our schools, in our Walmarts, in our hospitals, on our streets. We don't need Clinton to be another distance. We need Clinton to be a safe place so we could have travel. We need Clinton to be a safe place so that when we lay down our heads tonight, our children and their future is safe and protected. With sex trafficking being number one here in Clinton, I'm here to tell you, with 500 children missing, just in the last two months, 500. You ask me, where am I getting my resource from? I'm getting my resource from, from the FBI of Native Americans. He also works very closely with the sheriff department, and we will work closely with our sheriff departments. But we have to educate our public people, we have to bring awareness that this is going on. We have to have extra ears and extra eyes. So I pray and ask that you would give me that opportunity in my community to see greater success for Clinton and each of us. And thank you for your time, I humbly appreciate it.
Ms. Grant, would you please state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori Grant, 103 Austin Street in Clinton, North Carolina.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Wendy Taylor? Wendy Taylor? Please state your name and address.
My name is Wendy Taylor, 2556 Greensbridge Road, Garland, North Carolina. Every citizen in Sampsonville likes Christmas a lot, but the Board of Commissioners absolutely did not. The people were busy planning holidays with cheer. They were so excited that Christmas was near. Then they went to their mailboxes and found a new bill. The commissioners had sent them another raw deal. Those sneaky commissioners had devised a scheme to take more of their money and spoil their Christmas dreams. "Attax, attacks on our trash," the poor citizens hollered, "and look at the cost, why, it's $80." So they called the commissioners to voice their concerns. "We aren't rich people, you're taking all we earn." But the commissioners were unfazed. "These folks are just peasants, they don't need this money to buy Christmas presents. They must buy these decals, it's important," they said. "We've got to have more money, well, we've got to pay Ed. Not to mention our lawsuit and the new pay scale too, our monthly private security bill that is due. So go buy your decal by January 1 and open your wallets, for we've only just begun. If you don't buy the decal, well, you'll drive to Snow Hill. We know it's a long way, but you must do it still. If you're in Lee's District 4, it's a very long drive. The poor people there are struggling to survive." But Lethia didn't care, she just taxed them more. So in the March primaries, the voters will even the score.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor.
In Whoville, the Grinch's heart grew a size. I'm sorry, this is public comment, and you can't, you don't get to determine what I say.
Ms. Taylor.
You don't get to determine, this is public comment.
We do not, we do not talk about people's names, please.
In Whoville, the Grinch's heart grew a size. Unfortunately, our commissioners are not just as wise. Reappraisals for everyone in the coming new year, it's unprecedented times, or didn't you hear? So the time is now, citizens, we must take a stand, or the money and grabs won't end, they will only expand. Take a look at these faces- Take a look at these faces and remember them well, because starting in March, let's bid them farewell.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. BJ Lockmeach Bass, please.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for letting us come and speak tonight and for our community. We appreciate the opportunity. But I come tonight humbled, believe it or not, humbled with a true Wildcat heart and pride. I'm humbled because we have a deal of a lifetime in front of us. We have a deal that I do not want us to pass up, and please have careful consideration. Remember, this is an appeal for your consideration. Nothing's written in stone. We don't have to have the money just for your consideration. So please listen with an open heart and with an open mind and consider that's all been said tonight, not only by me, but some other people that have good points to say. Table it, discuss it, pray about it. Call your farmers, call your voters, ask around, get their opinions. Whatever it takes, just please let it be a fair and just decision. That's all I'm asking for tonight. I'm humbled because I wouldn't have your job for nothing, okay? I wouldn't. I know this country's rural. I know we're in a crisis. There's no way to make everybody happy. I get that. The government employees need higher wages. We need more deputies on patrol in our streets to keep us safe at night. I know that. We don't need any tax hike. I get that. Farmers and business owners, we're taxed to death. I get all that. I get it. I get it. I saw firsthand my daddy, what he went through as he served as a county commissioner and to seek for you guys. He worried about this day in and day out. He tried to think about how and this will affect this one or affect that business, or can we take from this one, pay Peter to pay to Paul? I mean, I heard him talk about all of it. And I hate it for you. I don't want your job. But I do want you to come and visit our school and see what we against us. Again, I can't imagine. I know four point two million dollars is a lot to ask for. I know we sound crazy as all get out. I know that. But we need it. We just need your pledge. We just need your word, just saying that we can do it. We can make this happen and see that I'm very humble. But I'm also a Wildcat pride. I just want to give you an example of something I want you to think about other than what you hear. You have two houses for sale in the area, twelve miles apart. There's an eighty-square-feet difference in the houses, okay? Forty thousand dollar price difference in the house. One has less square foot, one more acre, and is forty thousand dollars less. One house has eighty square foot more, forty thousand dollars less. And guess which house the buyer decides to buy? Number two, because of the school district. The house was twelve miles apart. Y'all, we want to have growth in northern Sampson County. It is coming. We have to have. What they see and they drive by and see our school is not what's inside the school and inside the hearts of the Hobton community. We deserve that appearance. We deserve the curb appeal. Thank you very much. Please take that in consideration. There is growth coming for northern Sampson County.
Thank you, BJ. Albert Heath. Albert Heath. Okay. Tanya Blackman.
This thing turns yellow at what point? Thirty seconds?
One minute.
My name is Tanya Blackman. I live at six seven six four Hobton Highway, Clinton, North Carolina. Mr. Kivett, I believe you're my person. I did email each of you last night late. I hope you had a chance to read it. If you didn't, you have a four-page email waiting for you. So I will try to consolidate, but this is scary. I'm a parent of a sophomore at Hobton. My parents attended Hobton. My husband and I attended Hobton. My daughter just graduated from Hobton. I have nothing but pride for this school. To even attempt to say it is not amazing is hard for me because when I look at Hobton, I see what's on the inside, not what's on the outside. Hobton and Hargrove have terrible curb appeal for what they offer our students inside. We have staff and students that do an amazing job every day, but when you drive by on seven oh one or face in highway, you don't see it, and it's unfortunate. Building a new high school would take a great deal of planning and thought. Obviously, Dr. King showed a lot of that consideration. However, having the ability to build this school with the help of this grant seems like the best opportunity that's going to come our way in a while. This school is over sixty-five years old and the oldest in the county. My children went to Hargrove, Hobton Middle, and Hobton High School. They've spent seventy-five percent of their educational career in schools that were built in the fifties. To me, that's great. I love what they offer. But that's really unacceptable when I look truly at it objectively. The three things that I want to call attention to as a school gets older, because we're going to need a new high school at some point. It's going to happen. It's just if it happens now with the help of the grant or later. The older the school gets, the more difficult it is to keep it safe. We have so many outdoor classrooms. If something happens, whether it's weather, active shooter, all of that is harder at Hobton right now. It becomes less accessible, like Satori said. I'm a physical therapist. I work with students. The older schools have all the issues with accessibility. New schools just don't have those same problems. The third thing is that we lose opportunities. Hobton does not host district band nights. They don't host district art nights because we can't support the extra people in our building, the extra things in our building. We don't have a track. That's a huge issue. Ten percent of our students participate in winter and spring track, and they don't even have the equipment to use. I mean, it's astronomical that they actually excel at track and don't have what they need. At Hobton, we use every speck of grass possible to have our athletes excel. We persevere, but should we have to persevere with what we've been given? There's so much more to say. My son today sat at a science table that I sat at thirty years ago. I mean, it's just unacceptable. The school was built in the fifties. In the fifties, they didn't think that there would be girls in shop class because there's only a male bathroom in the shop right now. They did not consider disabled students because there was no ADA. There was no idea. Those weren't options. Years ago, they didn't consider in the fifties computers and high-speed internet and technology needs. The school was built and did great things from the fifties on, but we need something new. The question I have for you tonight is what could our school and students do if our outside reflected our inside? We have an amazing school community, but nobody can see it past those six arches at the front. So please, help us to make our outside look like our inside. Thank you, and I'm sorry about the red.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blackman. I read your email. That's okay. Marilyn Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Brooks, one one two East Magnolia Lisbon Road, Rose Hill. Solid Waste Management. Okay, I'm going to be fast in reading. The county manager confirmed with me that currently convenience sites are funded by our tax dollars. I asked why we're being taxed twice with this new fee, and he informed me it was because the current taxes don't completely cover the cost of these sites in terms of volume of waste. I was also told that households with more than two vehicles would pay an additional eighty dollars for two more decals. We have three vehicles. Those with more than two are being penalized for owning more than the government fields we should own. I would have to pay one hundred sixty dollars per year for four decals. I only need three. So please, help me understand this. We're doubling the taxes to be able to use these sites, yet how does my ownership of three cars produce any more waste for these sites than they do now? This does not add up for me. The dissemination of information regarding this change, I feel, could have been handled a little bit differently. We get a bill in the mail with no warning. The county office's residents are given stacks of brochures to pass out after the fact. How many of these actually got distributed? And how many will go in the garbage because they are still sitting in the county office? The rollout of this was also somewhat inconsistent, I feel, as some people were given these flyers early on at the local convenience sites, and then they got pulled back. And my question would be why? That's a rhetorical question. The rollout sounds punitive as the brochure states the following. Decals lost in the mail are nonrefundable, so if the postal service loses the envelope, a resident has to pay again. You also don't allow decals to be transferred from one vehicle to another. Thus, we, the people, have to buy more than we need. If a vehicle is stolen, sold, or the windshield replaced, the owner must purchase another decal. So vehicle gets sold in November, I must shell out eighty dollars for a two-month decal and come back in January and purchase new decals at who knows what price then. Between the letter and the brochure, I'm still not sure if I'm required to have a decal if I choose not to use the convenience sites. Finally, Americans are tapped out. We are in a recession, borderline depression. If folks start throwing their garbage in fields or on the roadside, this county is going to have an infestation of rats and other vermin, which leads to disease. I, for one, enjoy living in a clean community and don't want to see it become a rat-infested hellhole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Ann Knowles. Ann Knowles.
Good evening. My name is Ann Knowles. I live at six eighteen Horn Ryan Road in Clinton. I'm a Hobton graduate. My daughter is. My grandson is. That school, when I was there, Ms. Lee, it had the courtyard. We could go out there and sit, and we didn't bring lunches there. You didn't bring food in much, but we could go out there and sit and talk. It was wonderful when I was there. It was a wonderful school. My granddaughter is leaving the middle school this year. I am so dreading her going to the building, not to the fabulous teachers, they're awesome, but to the building, to the darkness. Last year, I was at a Board of Education meeting, and they had just done a walkthrough with the newspaper at Hobton, if y'all remember it. And it was in the paper how bad Hobton was. The students were not smart. They were not learning. It was too dull. It was dark and dreary. And I asked them, "Then why haven't you fixed it?" No answers. So I'm glad to be here. I didn't know all this was happening, but I'm glad I was here because I fully support Hobton getting a new school. They need it. Our children deserve it. My grandchildren, your grandchildren, all of the children here and their grandchildren. Because it'd be another sixty years before another one's built, and we know that. I don't understand why we still have seventy-seven billion dollars in school debt, and we've been building schools a long time back. So I don't know. I don't understand that part of it. I'm sure y'all do. You know why you're keeping it going. But please do not, do not let Hobton not have what they need because we have not paid off schools before. They deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knowles.
And I will say thank you for my veterans' park. Don't forget, my veterans didn't have places to... Oh, we've got some veterans sitting out there. But don't forget us.
Ms. Knowles, we will not forget the veterans or the children. I promise. All right. Ariana Corbett.
Hello. My name's Ariana Corbett. I live at fifty-seven ninety Faceon Highway in Clinton. I have attended Hobton Elementary School, Middle School, and High School. I started kindergarten in two thousand six. I graduated high school in two thousand nineteen. And in January of two thousand twenty-four, I will start as an educator. Through my collegiate career, I always knew that I wanted to come back to my home, and I did that. I am a coach. I am a leader. I'm a future educator at Hobton, and I am very glad to have that opportunity. I've built many relationships within the school system and in the community. I am grateful for the opportunities that Hobton has given me as a student, a coach, and now as an educator. Our students deserve to have more opportunities than myself as an alumni have had. These opportunities include better classroom environments, newer facilities such as a cafeteria, auditorium, gymnasium, bathrooms, athletic fields such as track, and proper locker rooms for volleyball, basketball, and general PE classes. All classrooms need to be in one building, as others have said, for safety reasons. And overall, to have an appealing school to prospective students or faculty members. I could have chosen any other school in the county, in other counties, that had a lot better to offer when it comes to looks and what is provided to us and to my students. But I chose to go home. As I got on Facebook today, I happened to run into a memory from two thousand sixteen that a Midway student had posted. They said, "You go to Hobton, I'm sorry, you go to a trash-poor trailer-unit classroom, cockroach-infested school that is inferior to Midway. You were just lucky to live in Sampson County, so your school's name might be mentioned in the same breath as ours. Now, don't you have some cockroaches to go clean out of your bookbag?" That is not something that was said to me, but a classmate of mine. And I can point you to the exact student who said it and sent it to one of my classmates. It's a shame that other schools in this community think the same thing and think about Hobton as that way. But I don't see it that way. These people in this room do not see it that way. We choose to continue to support Hobton and continue to let it grow within the future. I am the future, and I can't wait to let the future continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Thank you very much. Whitney Parker.
Good evening. Whitney Parker, seven seven forty-five Snow Hill Drive. I want to start by saying that everyone deserves clean air and clean water. Notice the non-decades in Sampson County because of this toxic dump that's between Clinton and Roseboro. The air is full of methane gas. We now know that the water has fairer chemicals, which is PFAS, so our water is contaminated. It's obvious that Sampson County is choosing profit over people. It's kind of frustrating when you think about it because you have anxiety because you can't sleep at night, can't enjoy what you work for. Now you want us to pay for dumping trash. Moving forward, I just recommend eliminating this trash tax and move swiftly towards capping and closing this landfill. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Edward Gillam.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Edward Gillam. I'm from eight one seven West Second Street, Garland, North Carolina, two eight four four one. I'm here to talk about a subject. One of my town commissioners newly once, we were having a conversation, and he was advising me that Garland Shirt Company had closed on November twenty-eighth. That's over a hundred jobs. We all know that. He was telling me that how, you know, the families are about this room right here. I mean, people out of work. And it's very frustrating. It's sad because, you know, this is Christmas. We know that if they file for unemployment, it's going to take them a while to get it nailed, that kind of stuff. I'm not blaming the county commissioners for this. I'm not blaming the mayor or anybody else. But the thing is, we have to hold accountability of these businesses down in the lower part of Sampson County. I feel like that sometimes it's overlooked. Maybe there's other alternatives for actually income in Garland and places like that down there. I'm thinking about historical preservation. You know, you just got the CPB annual report. Invest in that. If you walk down those streets in Garland, it looks like dilapidated and everything, but there's a lot of history there, a lot of historical landmarks there. And maybe we can invest in that and get grants and stuff like that and put people in work and stuff. So we don't have to worry about this kind of stuff because a hundred people down there is devastating. Believe me, because it's that many people actually down there. But it's the southern end of the county. It's part of the county. And we have to... And we have to make sure that we take care of this, you know. It was good. We, we celebrated when the, when the business got back there. And now, you know, it's closed. Now, I don't hear anything about it. It's like, it's just gone, you know? And it's sad. And I think about those people and whatnot because actually, my mother used to work there a long time ago. And some of my family members actually currently had worked there. And so, I'm just here to make, acknowledge it and make sure maybe we can do something. Maybe you can go down there and help the mayor and the town board members and everything because we need that. We need your help. That's all I have to say. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Jack Hille.
My name's Jack Hille. 1391 Mileup Highway in Newton Grove. I don't have a big speech, but I just got frustrated today, and I called the town, county office, and the lady told me to come to the board meeting. I'm going to tell you why. Trash tax. I got that. What that is this? I go to a trash dump once a week, convenience site in Newton Grove. Couple of weeks ago, I went on Friday. Got to the gate. Gate's locked. Nothing there. Nobody there. Looked at the hours. They supposed to be open. Went today. Pulled up to the gate. Gate locked. I called the number on the fence. This lady evidently broke down. You're full of something. There ain't no sign on the table, on the gate. That's my gas and time I've secured two times recently. This has been going on for years, not just the last two months. It's been there when the waste of the industry was there. Same thing. And yet, you only pay an $80 tax? I don't get it. It don't make sense. It's just my frustration. I pay county tax. That's the only thing I pay county. I don't have county water. I don't have the privilege of that. I don't know why. Never been told why. But I got the privilege to carry ta, carry trash over to the dump site. It's supposed to be convenient. I don't want to see where it's convenient, me going two or three times to carry one little four, five bag of trash. How is that convenient to me? And then you want me to pay $80 a year for that convenience? Why weren't we told about this in ahead of time? Still, like one individual mentioned a while ago, we just got a tax bill. I don't understand how our government is working. Right now, it's not working to me. And I don't agree with it. And I told my wife when I left the house, I'm going to try to control my temper, but if I call you, bring the checkbook.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hille. I understand your frustration. Anthony Mons.
Good evening. They told me last time, someone told me, said, "Address myself as I am." And that's Apostle Mons. So, it's accordingly. Okay, so, this is my issue. First of all, for those of you who are part of Hobton, this was not my part of what I would come here today to address. But I came to 6248 Auter Mero, Godwin. Okay? My daughter went to Hobton for a period of time. She played basketball 2016, and she was only a state four-by-100 state champion, state championship. So, I'm familiar with, faced with black mold, so on and so forth. She has allergies, and so the black mold was definitely an issue. So, I do understand. When someone say they understand, that means they've been there, not just saying it at surface. You've been there. You can relate to what I'm talking about. So, I can relate to what y'all are saying about the dilapitation of the school and so on and so forth. So, Dr. King, I think he's still here. He did an awesome job. Everybody else who's been up did an awesome job as well. But this is why I'm here this evening. My purpose of being here this evening. First of all, only one commissioner reached out to me last month about Noah's issue that I brought up. So, there is a lack of effective communication. So, if I were you, I would take down this number. This is a number, 910-286-6604. You can call me. So, I don't have one commissioner reach out to me concerning that. So, my issue this evening is, those of you who have children, who have been part of the DSS, D8, DSS Sampson County system, I'm bringing to the commissioners' attention that there is a grave injustice that has been handed down and continues to be handed down. There's various families that has been affected by Sampson County DSS system and the grievous, the grievous actions that has been taking place by those in authoritative positions. I have brought them to several people's attention. Not going to mention names, but you know who you are. And so, I submit to you, the board, this evening, that I've been in contact with various families. And for those of you who are part of Hobton and so on and so forth, the power, the pen come voting time is very powerful. So, y'all remember that. Don't just come here for here. Go to, when it's time to vote, you can change things like that as well. That's one way of getting people's attention. But I, I submit to you, let's have a forum with these families. As commissioners, sit down. See us as humans, not just a statistic. And, and hear, listen to what these families and individuals has to say in the grievous actions and scrupulous activities that has been going on with Sampson County DSS. And I would like for that to happen. Anyone like to get in contact with me after this, you can get in contact with me as well. And if you know anyone, have them to get in contact with me because this is a movement that's about to start. So, I thank you this evening for listening. Don't just let it go in one ear and not the other. If I were you, I would get in contact with me. So, 910-286-6604. I greatly appreciate it. So, we need to do something. At least if we can stop the funding for DSS. That's one way of getting their attention as, as well. So, I'm not going away. Even when I get my grandchild back, I'm not going away. Appreciate it. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Ms. Knowles. Jo. Diane Newkirk.
My name is Diane Newkirk. 4730 Old Warsaw Road, adjacent to 1014 Curtis Ivy. And we do have others here with us on tonight as that you'll stand, all that are here due to our water conditions in the Turkey area. And the reason why we're here on tonight, we're here with Elaine Fason Hunt, who has been coming, I think, over a year now, talking about our water in our area. We do have rust in our water, and Lord knows what else is in the water. We can't drink it. We buy bottled water to drink, to cook, to wash our hair, to wash our clothes, especially white clothes. Or we wear them dingy. We also have to buy filters to go into our units monthly, on a monthly basis. And still, we see some film on top of the water when we leave it in a glass. We just want clean water and we, and feel good about drinking from our faucet. We want great things for Sampson County as well in our community. We look for great things to happen for the residents of Turkey. We have elderly people from 80 to 90 buying filters out of their social security checks. We pay county taxes like everyone else and would love to drink clean water from our faucet. There are many diseases in the land, and we pray that drinking our water would not impact a disease within us. To buy a case of water is $6 per case. There's 40 bottles. But buy two cases, depending on the household. Two cases is $12 a week. That's four weeks, $48 a month. That's 12 months to the year. That's $576 a year that we buy water just so, just so that we can have clean water to drink. So, we ask that you would consider, again, running the lines that's needed for us to get clean drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newkirk. I think that ends our public comment section, but I've got a couple of things I'm going to mention. Back in March, I presented some comments concerning our budget season and what we were working in. And I'll read just some excerpts from it. By state law, the county is required to develop, enact, and adhere a budget every year. By state law, the county is required to develop, enact, and adhere to a budget every year. Without question, we will need additional revenue, was something that we talked about. To the extent possible, we will need to look at alternative ways to increase revenue without significantly affecting the tax rate. This assumes that we minimize increases in operating expenses, in which that's still to do. Today, we're living in unprecedented times. Inflation is at a 40-year-high in a magnitude never seen in our lifetime. Our federal government concept of free spending and operating without a balanced budget is not a sound concept to govern. This is also not an option for local county governments. By law, we can't print money. The federal, the federal, the federal's government printed $13.2 trillion during COVID unfunded. We don't have that option, folks. Last year, our projected tax base increased, but the board had to reduce the budget by approximately $2.5 million. We, over $1 million was cut, deferring deposits into a variety of reserve accounts that are needed for long-term maintenance of facilities. These are, these are issues that we have to deal with as commissioners because that's our responsibility. We're also concerned about inflation in other supply chains. On a monthly basis, our county expenditures on electricity, gas, and other utilities are concerning. These costs are increasing for the county government in the same manner that individual homeowners and businesses are facing. Like private businesses, residential homeowners, we have the same level of revenue shortages that must be resolved. And then we went on, I went on to say, our employees, and this is basically, I'm speaking behalf of the, the commissioners, are our most valuable resource. This is what we said. Our employees are our most valuable resource. This is all employees. It's 560-some. I forget exactly the number. So, we implemented some, some raises. And at the time, it was not mentioned, but anyway, we realized that our departments are facing significant vacancies. Many of the vacancy challenges can be attributed to our inability to keep up with the market conditions of salaries. We admitted that. We knew we were having trouble. But we had a budget. We didn't have any money. So, we did a market study. The market study just came in just, just a few weeks ago, just a couple of weeks ago. And we're committed to, this is what was stated at the time. We are committed to meeting those needs, and it has always been considered the top priority, contrary to social media constant barrage of misinformation. You're saying we're not looking at it. We are. But our hands are tied. So, we have implemented multiple increases for facilities going back to July. Keep in mind, everyone on this board is a product of Sampson County, which we're proud. We service commissioners not for financial gain. We don't make any money here, folks, but to offer our services to the county in which we grew up in and love. We believe the long-term future of Sampson County will be quite positive if we work together to accomplish these goals. It will behoove us to move forward in a thoughtful and deliberate fashion. This is what was stated, what I stated back in March. Now, we just implemented a market study. The last two years, detention, detention center employees have received a 36.93% increase. Sheriff's Department, 35.18%. Social Services, 25.75%. And all other employees got a 24.47%. Now, we did the market study. That compared us with all the contiguous counties around us so that we could compete and retain people that work for this county. So, that has been our job, and that has been our, our goal all along. So, we are looking out for the employees as best we can, but coming with that is a cost. Now, this year, considering what we did, we're $8 million short, 8 million. We had, we had to, we had some money that we were able to get, that we had saved from ARPA, which was federal money from COVID. We didn't get as much as a lot of people got. I understand Maricopa County got 800 and some million dollars. LA County got $1.9 billion. I think we got 17.
I think it was 13. 12.3. 12.3.
12.3 million dollars. Now, we used it to enhance our water infrastructure. We put it into that. And by the way, our water isn't, is a separate system. No, no, no county money, no tax money goes into the water system. I have a well, just like you do. So, I know what you're going through, and I'm dealing with it, too. But our goal is, is, is not to hurt anyone, but to help everyone. We want, we want the rising tide floats all boats, and that's what we're hoping to do and what we're going to continue to strive to do. Has anyone else got a comment? I'll accept a motion to go in closed session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Put it out before they leave.
Well, that did surprise you?
All right, um.
But the Lord has mercy.
Accept the motion to come out of closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Second, all in favor, raise right hand. All right, I'll accept the motion to recess to reconvene on December fourteenth at ten o'clock. They have the motion.
So moved.
Second, all right, all in favor? All right.
Are we intending to do that in here or?
Wherever is available.
Would you rather do it in here or in our boardroom?
We'll do it over there and be easier, won't it?